Taffin leads the board's opening prayer.
Please bow with me. Our dear, most gracious heavenly father, we thank you for the opportunity to join together tonight to meet in the service of this district. We thank you for this district and for the blessings that you have shown upon us. We thank you for our students, our teachers, our parents, and our community members. Help us always to remember that we are here for the education of our children. That is our primary purpose, and help us keep that always in our heart. We ask that you be with those, dear heavenly father, in our community who need your help for unspoken needs. We ask that you be with our military in foreign lands. We ask you to be with us tonight. Give us wisdom and guidance. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing as Richard Fleming leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to the education and preparation of all students. The board uses this mission to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in a closed session, as stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the open meetings law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, our board members, except for James Guder, are present tonight, and we constitute a quorum and can conduct business on behalf of the district. That being said, I'll turn over the meeting to Dr. Burns for Agenda Item 1A, welcome and recognition of guests.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Good evening, everyone. A welcome. We are honored that you have chosen to spend part of your evening with us tonight, and we will begin with our very important profession of teaching recognition first, and so let me read you a little bit about the history of that. Tonight, we will honor our newest members in the very important profession of teaching program. We have been honoring our VIPs for over 25 years. Our VIP program is our way of saying thank you to our professional staff for being innovative leaders in learning, who diligently work to meet the needs of all our students. We want to recognize their efforts in making our schools a great place for quality learning to occur. To our honored guests, the Board of Trustees and administration say thank you for being a member of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD team and for being an innovator who has a positive influence on the lives of students. Educators, please come forward when your principal introduces you tonight to receive your certificate, and if there are staff members, friends, and family here tonight to celebrate this recognition with you, please stand as your VIP is introduced. And now, Ms. Klein, will you join me in front to recognize our honored guests?
Dr. Burns, Mrs. Klein, board members, good evening. My name is Matt Warnock, principal at Barbara Bush Middle School, and I am honored to present to you Ms. Carrie McGrath as a member of the very important profession of teaching. This is Ms. McGrath's seventh year as a Bush Bronco, serving as a social studies teacher, working tirelessly to bring history alive to our students. In addition to the classroom, she sponsors student council and takes students to Washington, DC every year. She received her bachelor's degree from Oklahoma State in Business Administration and holds a master's degree from UT at Dallas in organizational behavior, which no doubt serves her well each day in dealing with large groups of eighth graders. She has two boys that she is very proud of. Brock is in graduate school at the New School in New York City, and Patrick is a junior at St. Edwards University in Austin. When asked, her colleagues are not short of words when describing her. It would be difficult to find a teacher more dedicated to her students' success than Carrie McGrath. She is always willing to help you out if you have a question concerning activities or how to reach a difficult student. She is someone the students feel safe with, who they trust. She is a teacher of immense care and concern for each other and every one of her students, as evidenced by her almost daily morning tutoring, her removable patience, her unshakable, outgoing, and happy disposition, and always going more than the extra mile to assure each and every one of her students grasp all the concepts and content of American history. Carrie is one of the most caring teachers that I have ever known. She inspires me to learn more from history and to do more for my kids, and for that, I am proud to have her as my teaching partner. When I spoke with students about her, they had the following to share: She makes history fun and interesting by telling cool stories that capture your imagination. I will always remember her ever-permanent happiness. Ms. McGrath makes information relevant to 2012. She injects emotion into history that twists fourth period into a thrilling roller coaster ride through time. She stays on me so I can be a better student and person. History used to be one of my least favorite subjects, but now I've come to love it. And one student added, "P.S. Ms. McGrath has swag." And for those of you that left your teen dictionary at home, I assure you that is a high compliment. Thank you, Carrie, for all that you do for the Bronco Nation. CFB and Barbara Bush Middle School are fortunate that you have chosen us as your professional home. Congratulations on being selected as a member of the very important profession of teaching. Thank you.
My name is Joe Copeland. I'm the principal of Dan F. Long Middle School. It is with great pleasure that the Long family welcomes Bobby Taylor as our newest member to the very important profession of teaching. At Long, Ms. Taylor not only teaches math, she excels. She's had a 90% or higher tax passing rate in her on-level courses, as well as in her tax classes, which includes students that have never passed tax before. In addition, she helps other struggling math students in her role as a pull-out tax coach. A fellow teacher noted, "Ms. Taylor's rapport with kids is one that is inevitable, inviable among teachers. She creates an environment that doesn't just allow, but requires students to set high standards for themselves." Another teacher remarked, "The way she encourages students to excel is extraordinary. She not only teaches them the coursework, she boosts their self-esteem and inspires them to attain success." One student said that Ms. Taylor would sing a song to the class entitled, "I Believe I Can Fly." The student said she sang that song to herself the entire time she was taking the tax test, and it encouraged her to pass. Another student commented, "Ms. Taylor is an awesome teacher. She will help you if you need it. She is really fun, so you won't get bored. She's interested and different, interesting and different, but a good different." Outside the classroom, Bobby is just as active with students. She sponsored student council for three years, was a step team co-sponsor for two, and successfully coached UIL Math and impromptu events. However, her campus duties don't end there. She supports the administration and staff in her role as math instructional facilitator, a member of the campus improvement committee, avid site team recruitment chair, and member of our school's reading program committee. Over the years, Ms. Taylor has honed her leadership skills, and her efforts have not gone unnoticed. She was invited to be a member of the district's assessment writing team and was the dean of mathematics for two years of summer school and for the pilot of the Student Success Initiative in the summer. Currently, she is an administrative intern and pursuing a master's degree in administration from the University of North Texas. Because of her zeal for education, her commitment to leadership, her unyielding devotion to her students, and the profession of teaching, we are honored that Bobby Taylor is our VIP.
Good evening, President Klein, Dr. Burns, and members of the school board. My name is Debbie Williams, principal of Kent Elementary. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce and honor, for the second time, as a member of the very important profession of teaching, DeAndrea Parker. Mrs. Parker has been teaching for 31 years. She helped to open the doors at Kent Elementary. She is someone who truly makes a difference at our school, and she models success. A colleague wrote the following about Mrs. Parker: "I asked the teachers to submit ideas, and I couldn't have said it better, so I've stolen your words if you're out there. She's the epitome of an awesome teacher. She has a huge heart that is always looking to help, whether it is a student, teacher, family, or friend. In watching her talk with students, she truly respects each one and builds them up to make them feel amazing, even if they just got in trouble. DeAndrea spends countless hours planning and preparing lessons to maximize the impact with what little time we have in the classroom. She makes calls home to check on students and even makes home visits. She's been known to provide food and clothing for children and families when she sees that they are in need. She spends hours after school tutoring children and always goes the extra mile to make sure they get what they need to be successful in school and in life. DeAndrea is willing to put in the time to build up a strong team. She listens to everyone's ideas and truly works collaboratively to find what will be best for kids. DeAndrea deserves to be recognized for all her efforts in teaching. She not only is a wonderful teacher of content material, but also teaches kids how to be good people. This comes easily for her because she's a great person." And she's here tonight with her husband, and I'm a crier too when people get going, her husband Billy, her daughter Amanda, son-in-law John, and son Andrew, which she's proud of all of her family. Kent Elementary is proud to recognize DeAndrea Parker as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
My name is Dreama Mayfield, principal La Vida Elementary. It gives me great pleasure to present our member of the very important profession of Mrs. Stabel teaches second grade, is a team leader, and is often the last teacher to leave for the day. She spends a lot of time planning, and her curriculum is strengthened by her innovative ideas. When Ms. Stabel is not teaching, she enjoys scrapbooking and being a mom, or should I say referee, to twin girls, one a student at Texas Tech and the other a student at Texas A&amp;M. A house divided for sure. Thank goodness for her husband Jeff. Ms. Stabel inspires her colleagues and is always willing to share her ideas and knowledge. She searches for ways to improve her teaching and attends numerous workshops to become the most effective teacher possible. She is eager to implement new strategies in her classroom and then share the results with her team. We did that in PLC today. Her team said, "Kelly is very easy to work with and is an exceptional teacher who works hard to motivate her students. The students in her class are always on task, engaged, and she has a great relationship with students and families. She has high expectations for each student, and she knows both their strengths and areas for improvement." Well, her students know Ms. Stabel quite well. One student said, "Ms. Stabel really gets into teaching and learning." Another one said, "When she read the story, 'Tacky the Penguin,' well, she made great penguin voices, and she can even move like a penguin." She has a great personality. She's nice, she's silly, she makes learning fun, and she loves animal prints. Come check out a room. Ms. Stabel is a La Vida leopard who wears her spots proudly each and every day. She's an amazing teacher, person, and friend. She loves her job, and it shows. We're proud to honor Kelly Stabel as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
Good evening. My name is Benita Gordon, the principal at McQuarreter Elementary School, and we gladly welcome our newest member of the very important profession of teaching, Mrs. Blanche Stewart. You know, I had a teacher say, "It was really hard this year to nominate a VIP for McQuarreter because we're like a family, and we all make great contributions to students." I know this is true, so to have Blanche to be chosen just tells you she's the best of the best. So, why Blanche? Because even though her job title is Content Mastery Resource Teacher, she has a deep dedication to all students. You can tell this as she educates our staff on the value of creating student-led conferences, or when she passionately discusses how having a great personal relationship with students is vital to any child's success. Why Blanche? Because you can hear from the tone in her voice and see by the glow on her face, she has a core belief that all students are worthy of learning at high levels. She knows each child can reach heights unknown. Why, her favorite quote is from P. A. J., "Each time one prematurely teaches a child something, he could discover himself, a child is kept from inventing it and consequently from understanding it completely." Why Blanche? She defends a student's right to be served, whether she's fighting for students to qualify for special ed, fighting for them to exit, or even fighting for them to receive GT services. She is always in their corner. And mind you, when she has a child's back, it doesn't matter who she's speaking to, a colleague, a parent, or an administrator. Just ask me. But in a kind and dignified way, she insists on everyone doing what's right for children. Why Blanche? Because her name says it all. Blanche means to be pure, untainted, and absolute. This represents how she tackles her job. Her mission is to take the pure of heart, our children, and have an untainted path so students can achieve the absolute, a guaranteed and viable high level of education. Why Blanche? Just ask some of our staff. Ms. Peston states, "She is very supportive and has a major impact on high student achievement with children, who at times may not feel very successful." Ms. Weddle says, "I don't know what I would do without her assistance with my friends. She has a huge load and handles it all well with a smile." Ms. Ball says, "She simply gets the job done and has a very whatever-takes attitude when it comes to serving her students. The way she manages to teach students at different levels amazes me. Not many teachers can do what she does." Carolyn Smith says, "She has passion for each of her students and their success. She's always looking for some method or tool she can use to help students gain a better understanding of their learning targets. She has a smile and a kind word for everyone." And how about Dartevian's letter to Ms. Stewart? "I am really sorry for not doing what I was supposed to do when you were gone. Next time, I'll do everything you leave for us to do. I will not draw when I'm supposed to do my work. I'm really, really sorry for how I acted. I will never try to show out in front of my friends again. This stuff I'm writing is really true. I mean it. I hope you can trust me because I will act like kids should when they go to school. I mean, like they have some home training. I mean every word. No more trying to fit in. I come to school to learn." One parent, who sent Mrs. Stewart four notes in one day, had this to say: "You know how hard it was for me to believe that Ally would make more progress. You saw my doubt and my tears. Thank you for helping her. She is where she is now because of you. Ally is a smart, bright little girl who believes in herself. Now I do too. Thank you again and again for your help." And that, my friends, is why Blanche. We love you, and thanks.
Good evening, Dr. Burns and members of the board. I'm Kathy Grebe, proud principal of Sheffield Primary, and it gives me great pleasure tonight to introduce our very important profession, newest member of the very important profession
I would like to also honor Jennifer's mom and dad tonight, Linda and Clifford Barrier, along with her brother Danny and niece and nephew. Also, Jennifer's mom, Linda, worked in CFB for 27 years. Jennifer went to Carrollton Elementary, Perry Middle School, and a proud graduate of R.L. Turner High School. She has many hobbies outside of school, but one that she loves the most and is dear to her heart is spoiling her niece and nephew. And also, she is a member of the Lewisville Saddle Club, and we are the Sheffield Wranglers, so that is in line with her hobby of her horses. Some of Ms. Barrier's students stated that she deserved this award because, "I love her so much, and she loves me, and I love my school. She is the best teacher, and she has a dog. She lets us listen to good songs." Another student stated, "She deserves this because she lets us sit in chairs." Timothy, one of her pre-K students, stated, "Because I love her, and I just came here, and I'm three years old." But he needs to add a year to that, his four. And Valerie stated, "Because she is the winner, and Ms. Briggs told me so." And one of the most creative ones was, "We're the monkeys, and she's the head monkey." Comments from some of her peers were, "She works hard with her little ones and is always smiling. Jennifer is so very patient. She's dedicated. She has done a great job with Sunshine and organizes ways to make our school life better. She loves all her students, and she works so hard to ensure their success. She has a sensitive soul that reaches out to others when they are in need. I feel it is time for her hard work and dedication to be publicly recognized. I cannot begin to think of anyone who is more deserving or who gives of her time to our school because she loves where she works, she loves the students and staff at Sheffield Primary. Jennifer is on top of Sunshine Activities and is always so positive, and she has school spirit." And Jennifer, I cannot close without sharing a memory that Sandra Fogel shared with me about your first year of teaching. Sandra said she would never forget the look on your face the day you came in her classroom and said, "This mixture will not turn into a gingerbread man." So Sandra took the bowl of the mixture, she looked inside, and she knew instantly why it would not form into a gingerbread man because it was so runny. So you both, problem solved, and added quickly two cups of flour. So thank you for saving your students' day. You were able to form a gingerbread man, bake him, and your students got to run through the school looking for the gingerbread man. And Jennifer, we all love you, and we are so fortunate to have you at Sheffield Primary and to be our newest member in the very important profession of teaching. Congratulations.
That concludes our recognition, but we have some district and board announcements we'd like to share with you, so if you'd turn your attention to the screen.
Good evening, and welcome to another edition of the board announcements for the month of February. We're students in the Academy for Media Arts and Technology at R.L. Turner High School in Carrollton, and we are pleased to deliver to you the important news you need to know about the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District.
Dr. Burns and his leadership team were at, again, last month honoring another set of schools who earned either an exemplary or a recognized rating for the 2010-2011 school year. An incredible 31 schools earned either one of those ratings last year. The schools visited were Carrollton Elementary, recognized, and Los Colinas Elementary also received a recognized rating for the 2010-2011 school year. Congratulations to all of those schools for all of your hard work.
It's time once again for the 11th Annual CFB ISD Gently Used Book Sale. The Gently Used Book Sale is a fundraising event co-hosted by the CFB ISD Council, PTA, and the CFB ISD Educational Foundation for the benefit of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District. Proceeds help support such things as student scholarships, teacher grants, PTA program grants, PTA closed closet, the multi-language PTA brochures and programs, as well as safe, alcohol-free, and drug-free post-prom parties for all four CFB ISD high schools.
The event takes place at a new location in Mills Point Shopping Center at 2810 East Trinity Mills Road, Suite 117 in Carrollton, from February 23rd to the 26th. Please take the time to stop by. Here's a list of dates and times, as well as prices, for the books that will be at You can also help out by not just going, but donating. Do you have hardback books, paperback books, audiobooks, DVDs, or other items that you typically find in a bookstore? You can drop off these items at any CFB ISD school lobby or at the administration building.
You can also drop off items at the book sale location in the Mills Point Shopping Center. You can check out www.gentlyusedbooksale.org. For times, volunteers are there to take your donations. And if you would like to volunteer, the Educational Foundation and PTA can use your support. Information about volunteering is on the book sale website as well.
Another great annual event in the CFB ISD community is Casey's Run, benefiting the All-Star Special Olympics team of Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. This year's event, honoring the legacy of service, will be on March 24th at Standard Stadium, so strap on your running shoes and plan to attend the opening ceremonies that begin at 8:00 a.m. A one-mile family run, fun run, and 5K take place after the ceremonies. You can register online at www.cfbisd.edu/kasey. Thank you for supporting this great event.
Next week, on February 8th, the district will have early release for staff development at all of its campuses. Students will be released early from their school at the following times. Elementary schools release at 10:40 a.m., high school releases at 11:20 a.m., all middle school students will be released at 12:00 noon, our Mary Grimes Campus releases at 12:45 p.m., and B. Salazar releases at 10:35 a.m. All students attending early college at the Brookhaven Campus will not be released early and will follow a normal schedule.
There are so many great things happening in our district, so many things, in fact, that it is hard to fit them all inside our allotted time for the board announcements. That is why we have created some great websites to help spread the word about all the great things our district has accomplished.
Have you heard the great things parents, staff, and community members are saying about CFB ISD? Check out our testimonials at www.cfbisd.edu/testimonials. You can share your story about CFB ISD at www.cfbisd.edu/share.
Students and staff in the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD are simply amazing. Each and every day, they are achieving at high levels. Our students are setting the bar high and continuing to soar past it. In the classroom, on the field, and in state and national competitions, our students are shining bright. We encourage you to check out all the great accolades about our students and staff on our website. You can also follow updates about accolades on Facebook or Twitter.
Thanks for tuning in this week. Our next regular school board meeting will be right here in the boardroom on Thursday, March 1st at 7:00 p.m. inside the administration building at 1445 North Perry Road in Carrollton. All board members have a work-study session on resource allocation on February 16th at 6:30 p.m. here as well. Until next month, we wish you a good night as we sign off from the cozy AMAT studios at R.L. Turner. Good night.
Ms. Klein, that concludes recognition and announcements for tonight.
I'd like to thank the campuses for bringing your VIPs to be recognized by us and everyone in the room tonight. Your stories of your hard work and dedication and your words, and also your love of our students is obvious, and we appreciate all of y'all being here in our district. At this time, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess. We'll convene back about 7:42 or so. We're going to let those of you that need to do other things tonight leave if you'd like, but if you're intrigued by the superintendent's report, that'll be our next agenda item. It's on student achievement and particularly in mathematics. But other than that, during our recess, if you would like to come back and speak during Audience for Guests, which is Agenda Item 3A, and address the board, you may fill out a form found outside the door and give it to Ms. Sharon Scrivener, who's right here on the corner. So please enjoy your break, and if you have to leave us, you're okay. And those that stay will be starting back in about 10 minutes. Thank you very much. 143, and we'll call this meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees back to order. We are at Item 2, Report by Superintendent 2A is Presentation on Student Achievement: Mathematicians at Work Look Inside CFB ISD.
All right, thank you, Ms. Klein, members of the board. As you know, we regularly present information to you about what we're doing in our academic world regarding student achievement. We have made a lot of progress in math in this district. We believe we are really helping kids understand math at deeper levels, which will help them as they advance in higher math, and so we're excited tonight to bring you our mathematicians at work. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mayer to give the formal introductions. Dr. Mayer?
Thank you, Dr. Burns. The presentation this evening is going to share with you things that we're doing differently in mathematics classrooms to really build deep conceptual understanding about mathematics and also to, you know, make kids want to be in math classes. That's one of our challenges, and so that's one of the things that we've been working on, and we believe we are making great progress in that area. I'm going to turn it over to our two coordinators, but before I introduce them, I'd like to say that we have a lot of professional staff that support mathematics in the district. We have math coaches, we have instructional specialists who work with mathematics, and I'd like those folks to stand because I think there are a lot of those in the audience tonight. Would you please stand and be recognized? It is truly a team effort, and we could not do it without all these professional staff working with us every day. Our mathematics program is under the guidance from Pre-K 8 with Ms. Pam Smith. She's been with us a long time. And our high school mathematics program is under the guidance of Ms. Tanya Garvey. We are blessed with two very capable coordinators that lead this work in the district, and I'm going to turn it over to them now. I think Pamela is going to begin.
Thank you, Dr. Mayer. Dr. Burns, Ms. Klein, members of the board. Tanya and I are very excited to be here tonight and actually deeply honored. I don't know if today was actually chosen, but if you didn't know, today was the 100th day of school. And all across the district, and I would say probably more so in elementary school, you saw kids collecting 100 things. They read books. I even asked one of my coaches, little girl, "What'd you do today?" And she said, "We got extra minutes at PE." And I mean, at recess, and I was thinking, "100 minutes? We won't go there." But I was thinking that probably just a lot of kids at school today probably just celebrated that they're more than halfway through. But anyway, tonight, we're going to be presenting on Mathematicians at Work. And one of the things I want you to notice on the slide, that mathematicians not only include our students, but they also include all of the adults, which are the teachers and administrators, coaches and specialists in this district. And when we say mathematicians, we mean all of us in this room. Okay, now I got to get the buttons right. So in keeping with our goals for CFB, the supporting objective one, which is to continuously increase student achievement, really and truly is our number-one goal. And number two with the support staff is we are continuously improving the learning environment for students. Tonight's presentation, we're going to be focusing on some information from the TIMS Report, which is the Trends in International Math and Science Study. We'll be sharing some of the data from the NAEP, which is the National Assessment of Educational Progress. We'll also take you on an eight-year journey through the TACS, which is a Texas Assessment of Knowledge and Skills. As we gear up for our new start, we want to see about where we've been and where we're going to head. And the most important thing tonight is really CFB's vision for mathematical teaching and learning.
First thing here is we have the TIMS Report for grades four and grade eight. And one thing to notice is where the U.S. stands internationally here. And we're right here and below. The grouped in blue on both sides for grade four and grade eight, considered the elite, they're ahead of us. But notice we're right here in the middle, and some of the people that we look for, the Netherlands and Japan and Singapore, that we look at their mathematics programs and what they're doing, and the research, and the people that we use that research them, those are the places that they look as well. And that's where we came from here, and that's what we have there. And then when we go to national, and you look at NAEP for grade four, and how Texas did here, we had two, CFB had two schools, Blanton Elementary and Bush Middle School that were sampling populations that participated in this. And we don't get individual results, they're just overall results. But Texas overall in grade four was 20 states outperformed Texas overall. African-Americans, only two states outperformed Texas, Massachusetts and New Hampshire. And Hispanic, only six states outperformed Texas, Montana, Florida, North Carolina, Virginia, Maryland, and Massachusetts. English-language learners, only five states outperformed Texas, Kansas, Indiana, Ohio, North Carolina, and South Carolina. And that's where grade four and where we stand nationally with the state. On grade eight, nine states outperformed Texas. Texas was tied for number one with African-Americans, with Hawaii on their performance on NAEP. With Hispanic, only state to outperform Texas was Montana. English-language learners, two states, South Carolina and May, outperformed Texas. So that's where we stand there. You know, when we look at some of our achievement gaps and that sort of thing, and where Texas stands. So that's on the national front. And then we go to our TACS, our Texas Assessment of Knowledge and Skills, and how we compare, how CFB compares to the state. If you look right here, CFB in 2004 was at 72 percent, met the expectation, and then seven years later moved to 87 percent. Okay? The state was at 66 and moved to 84. If you come down here to the economically disadvantaged for the state, it went from 2004 at 55 percent to 79 percent. For CFB, it went from 51 percent to 84 percent on our economically disadvantaged students. And that's with the change in population there. So when you notice the comparison to the states, it has it for each subpop all across. And those are the gains that we've seen.
One of the research-informed best practices that we've been working with diligently in CFB is to try to get our classrooms into learning communities. And one of our researchers that we spend a lot of time on is Robert Marzano, and he says that children work, and so do adults, really anybody, when you learn with and through others. So what we've brought to the district are two books. Classroom Discussions is mainly in the elementary levels, and then purposefully or promoting purposeful discourse is mainly for secondary teachers. These two books, we've had extensive work, study groups, campus-based discussions, just in PLCs, just bringing this to the forefront for teachers to understand what does it take to get a classroom to this level. When I was out at one of the campuses, I captured this bulletin board, and of course, it's kind of funny, "Are you talking in class?" Well, we hope so. One of the things that we're thinking about is, and from the research of what we're reading, is that there are certain elements that gradually transform classrooms. Number one, you have a shift from the teacher as the sole questioner to both children and teacher as questioners. Children increasingly explaining and articulating their math ideas. A shift from the teacher as the source of all the math ideals to children's ideals also influenced the directions of many lessons that we go, because if we can listen to how the kids are thinking, then it also helps me to know what the kids know and are able to do, and then therefore transform where I'm going to make my next teacher move. Children increasingly take responsibility for learning and for the evaluation of themselves and others. The last one is increasing children's child-to-child talk with teachers' guidance as needed. We also brought in the Classroom Discussions book, which is one of our latest books, and it talks about that there's five major reasons why that talk is critical to teaching and learning. I'm not going to read directly off this, I'm going to kind of paraphrase some things. And number one, it says if students talk about the content they're studying, then we can see clearly what they don't understand and what they do understand. Getting students to talk about mathematical content is one of the best ways to engage informative assessment. It allows students to adjust their own reasoning, and over time, it improves their metacognition. When we hear about and we talk about concepts, procedures, and applications, our memories have more to work with. Everybody benefits from hearing the same content verbalized in different ways, particularly students who may need more time to process ideas. Learning to reason takes time. Children and adults need to practice, work out the logic of their ideas, and then put them together in a persuasive argument. Practice with reasoning requires that we have other people to reason with. People who can respond to our own reasoning and share their reasoning with us in the classrooms, teachers give students that practice by using many of the talk moves that are very strategic moves. When talk is used intensively in classes, students gain a richer sense of what words and phrases mean and of how to use them. Their control over their complex grammar also improves. We've seen great increase in just the ability for kids to speak about mathematics, which is something that I honestly can say even 10 years ago. Classrooms are pretty quiet in math. You saw lots of kids sitting at desks and working worksheets, and no one ever really knew, and you've got checks and x's on papers. But you're not seeing that anymore. If you have an opportunity, get out in Carrollton and visit these classrooms. The last one is when teachers use classroom talk to take, to a great deal, it gives students a chance to learn about respect and kindness. I was over at an elementary school the other day where one of our students who actually was an English-language learner, just kind of grappling with this idea about dollars and cents, and on the board, it truly was $5.17, but when she read it, she said, "It's 517." And a little boy said, "Aiden, I respectfully disagree with you. In America, we have things called decimal points." And those decimal points, and he just went on just beautifully. And then he looks at her, "Aiden, did you understand?" And she said, "Yeah, but isn't it still 517 cents?" And he's like, "Yeah, but it's $5.17." But you will hear this kind of argument going on as low as kindergarten. So right now, what I want to do is I want to show you a brief clip from some of this research, and just bear with me here because I'm not the best at, I've got to remember, escape. Talk myself through this. Okay. Okay, it didn't come up the way it was supposed to come up, and it's always been there.
Oh, that look of help, sheer panic.
I don't know what it's going to do. Okay, here we go, here we go.
When I first started teaching, I thought it was what came out of my mouth that was going to inspire the students. It's actually what comes out of their mouths, how they discuss things together, and that they learn much more from solving together, collaborating together, and talking together.
Before, it's more than half. More than the after.
I get so much information from the conversations that they have. I want the discussion to go more from student to student to student, and less to student to teacher to student. Why do you disagree with Jada?
Because...
No, tell her!
Okay, because Jada, the eight is already there, plus the one, so 21 equals 81.
I found it's improved my teaching because it's really letting me know where my kids are and how they're getting to the answers they're getting to.
Who can restate the pattern that Laney was using? What was her pattern? Hey Lana.
She counted by fives.
She was counting by fives. We got there faster, didn't we?
You are using talk in classrooms to promote reasoning, getting students to externalize their reasoning and to think about the reasoning of others.
Can you repeat how you got the number 30?
Um, I did the length, six times the width, which was five, and I got 30.
Um, she multiplied the length and the width, and she got 30. And then she did 30 times 3, which is the height, and got 90.
Children who aren't sure or are more reticent won't volunteer to share, but when you turn and talk, it gives them some ideas, it plays some scenes in their minds, it makes them more confident.
If I rounded it toward like an equivalent fraction, like six eighths would be equivalent to 3/4.
You throw up another 3, and then another 3, and then there's only a little bit more.
They have a lot to say, and what they have to share is very meaningful and important, and it gives you valid information as a teacher as to where you need to go next in your teaching.
So that research has really given us a lot of information, and like I said, the coaches have done extensive work as they're coaching with a lot of teachers. We have lots of resources put together for teachers to help them in the classroom. And so now Tanya's going to talk to you a little bit about the movement that's more for the middle school, high school level of the habits of mind.
The habits of mind are the ways of thinking, how kids, how they think through and solve challenging problems. And so the first thing we have here is performing through experiments, and even though it's middle and high school thoughts, it's the same thing they're doing in elementary school. I have two children that go to an elementary school in this district, and I promise you, they're doing every single bit of it because they quiz me about it all the time, and I have to ask Pam for some help. So performing through experiments, whether it's taking games that they're playing, or whether it's, you know, when you're talking about total surface area and lateral surface area, and whether they're cutting out things to wrap around to have an understanding, that's what we're talking about when we do experiments in order for kids, in order for students to understand and to be able to perform and have a true understanding and knowledge of the concept. The next one is finding and explaining patterns, whether it's an A/B pattern, or whether it goes beyond to number patterns in middle grades, or whether it's the algebraic function patterns. It's giving, showing students patterns and having them develop the algorithm and the understanding from those patterns, so that they have the knowledge there, rather than just having them memorize something to begin with. We just had a discussion last week on laws of exponents, and for those of you that may not remember, most of us were taught how to memorize them. But when you give them and show them exactly how to work out problems, and then they develop that law of exponent or the rule of exponents, then it's a lot easier for them to have a knowledge of what they're going to do. Next one is using precise language. Moving from informal language to formal language in mathematics, so we all understand what we're talking about, and helps with the depth of knowledge, our depth of knowledge, using our GLAD strategies and our content literacy strategies in our math classrooms to make sure we all have the same understanding. Creating and using representations, whether it's graphs, diagrams, models, algorithms, number sentences, all of these things are used in order for us to have an understanding and a modeling, our students to have that in the many ways that they can learn. Generalizing from examples, I'd just like to say, by the way, this is a high school example right here of posturing in the classroom, where we take students' work, student work, and have them look at each example so that then they make an overall generalization, the students do. The interesting thing is, a lot of times, in all grade levels, their generalizations may sometimes be wrong. And the idea is to have them decide what's right about it, if it's always true, sometimes true, or never true, and then develop it through there so that then they know how to defend and prove their thoughts and ideas. And then expecting mathematics to make sense. The reasoning behind the math, the reasoning behind the thinking and the problem-solving, and the strategies that they use in order for them to get to the point they need to be at, that's what we want to hear. We want them to understand what makes sense, and if it doesn't, that they realize there's something wrong here. And then they go back and they use their skills for those challenging problems.
How many chips do you have?
Um, we have six.
Okay, and what happened when you tossed them? What did you get? How many does that make?
Six.
Wow, that's a combination that makes six. Go ahead and record it, and I want to see what you get the next time. Okay, toss the chips, shake it up, kid. Wow, how many chips are on the table without even counting them? How did you know it's still six? You're right. Can you tell Daddy, how do you know they're still six? Can you tell me, how do you know they're still six? So it has to still be six? What combination did you get this time?
Faces. And these, and these look the same as this. Because the faces look actually the same, but they're not the same shape. And these, with this one and this, it puts together and it matches.
Those matching faces.
So we're going to pause right there for just a moment before we move on. That actually was inside one of our kindergarten classrooms and that's what you will hear, is the language of mathematics, just, I mean, it's all around. These kids are not afraid to talk about their math and that's what we're trying to do is to make sure that within elementary classrooms that this transforms into middle school and high school. Just today, we brought in a presenter that spent the last three days with the middle school staffs on building numerical fluency because even looking at some of our recent data from the ReadyStep, which is our pre-PSAT and try to increase SAT scores, one of the things we're still noticing is that kids don't have a real grasp yet and what it is, they don't have fluency. They have a lot of rules in their heads and the presenter was just very, very comical at saying, it's kind of like in middle school, you throw up a fraction, the first thing they do is panic. The second thing they do is they start flipping a coin, okay, today am I supposed to add those like denominators? No, I'm supposed to cross multiply. No, I think I'm supposed to cancel those numbers out because they have all these rules in their head, but they don't have a real internal ownership of what's going on and so we spent a lot of time with that. Another thing that she really mentioned was a lot of use of tricks, shortcuts, mnemonic devices. And her premise is that if it can be understood in math, then we need to stay away from tricks and shortcuts and mnemonic devices because if I can get you to really understand it, then you're going to hold it for life. And that's what we're trying to get is these lifelong learners of math. This is a typical high school class that you'll see here and, and what you're seeing here looks very different in some ways from the elementary, but not so. All across our district, you're going to see children working in group work, you'll see technology being used, they're, they're problem solving together, making sure that their answers make sense. They test somebody else for reasonableness, you know, what do you think, Tanya? You know, that's not what I got on this problem, but how did you get that? And then Tanya explains and together then they work out the process. When kids need help, then you'll see it's kind of like a math workshop. Teachers then truly facilitate the learning and you'll see teachers walking around the classroom facilitating and asking questions that probe those kids to think to deeper and higher levels. But yet again, every kid is still responsible for their own learning, so it's not like we do everything in group work and no kid ever has to show what they know. We're going to conclude tonight with a quote from Bert Van Oors, which is one of our researchers and people that Tanya and I know in the math world. And he says, "The development of positive mathematical attitudes is linked to the direct involvement of students in activities that involve both quality mathematics and communication with significant others within a clearly defined community such as a classroom." This concludes our presentation because I could go on and on and on and you don't need me to do that. So I will open it up now if you guys have any questions that you want to ask of Tanya and I.
Board members, are there any questions?
I'd like to ask one on the first slide.
Sure.
It was labeled TIM.
Yes, yes. Is there a way to go back? You're talking about the TMS report, the Trends in International Mathematics and Science Study? This one.
What's, uh, what are the attributes that are used? Are they comparing one nation to another?
Based upon an assessment?
Yes.
Yep, that's it. One math assessment and they give it to these. And I'm not going to say that all students across the United States, Dr. Hastings could probably speak better for this than, than me, really, look at me, I'm going to punt. But no, every kid doesn't take the exam, they do a sampling of students across our nation and they do the same thing in those other countries and then just based upon the scores in mathematics.
With all things being equal, are we saying that they have the same, same situation as far as kids and the different social?
No, no.
No, they're absolute values. Absolute values.
Yeah.
They don't have any regression.
No.
Exactly. That was a great question.
It's about 1,000, I believe it's about 1,000 students.
That'd be a little bit skewed then.
Yes.
Absolutely. That's a excellent point.
Now, one thing that's kind of interesting, if you go into the TMS report, and we didn't put the website up here, but I spent the other night several hours in it because once you get in there, you actually can start pulling up things specifically you want to look at. Like if I really just wanted to look at a specific pop maybe of economically disadvantaged kids in the U.S., how does that compare against the ones from those countries? And there's a lot, I mean, even to how much kids, you know, education of teachers in countries and things like that, which is really interesting. Yes, sir.
Can we go to the next slide?
Yes.
What are those numbers measuring? What do those numbers mean?
Well, I believe that is the scale score that they use for the NAEP. And again, Chloe, am I correct in saying so? It's a scale score and that is comparing Texas's scale score overall. And again, NAEP is a sampling of students, it's not all students, we don't give it nationally to every student, it's just a sampling. And then they go in and they just sample kids across the United States from each of the states.
That's telling me who's taking the test. It doesn't tell me what the 241 is like, is 242 the best you can get?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know if I know that answer. But I can...
And I apologize for not thinking of this before.
That's okay, but I'll look it up and I'll shoot you an email because I'm not really sure what the maximum score, I just know...
What's being measured and...
Yes.
Because we know that Texas is 241 and the nation's 240.
Yes, which is a mean average.
We don't know how, what that one means.
Like on a scale, you're talking about on a scale, you don't know if that's, that could be huge if it's the 241 at the top.
True, true.
And 241 may be magnificent.
Right.
Or maybe invisible.
Right, exactly.
True.
The next.
I apologize for...
That's okay, we will get that to you.
Board members, any other questions? We appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, thank you.
We're now at item three, Board Operations. Three A is Audience for Guests. The Board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so at this time. Or I actually have two Audience for Guests and I believe that y'all both would like to speak to the specific item that you're here for. So, but I'll finish, I'll finish remapping Audience for Guests. The Audience for Guests is requested to stay under three minutes. And what we'll do is when we get to that item, we'll make the presentation and then y'all can speak to it. I'd like to thank the mathematics team for coming tonight. Bye, y'all.
Well done.
So, at this time, we'll move on to three B Consent Agenda Action. Three B one, Election of Personnel. Three B two, Review Tasby Update 92 Legal Policies and Add/Revised or Delete Local Policies, including deletion of Policy E-I-A-B Local as recommended by Tasby Policy Service and District Administrative Staff. First reading. Three B three, Consider Approval of Proposed School Calendar for 2012-13. Three B four, Consider Approval of District's Application for Expedited TEA Waiver. Three B five, Consider Out-of-State Travel Requests for R.L. Turner L.O.T.E. Department, French, to travel to Belgium, France, and Switzerland, March 7th to the 15th, next year, 2013, to learn about other cultures and see historical landmarks firsthand. Three B six, Consider Out-of-State Travel Request for Newman Smith International Business Academy to travel to Munich, Germany, Vienna, and Salzburg, Austria, Budapest, Hungary, Prague, Czech Republic, March 7th through 18th, 2012. I wish they would invite the Board to visit economic, financial, and historic cities in Europe. Three B seven, Consider Out-of-State Travel Request for Bush Middle School, I think we met the teacher tonight that's going. Bush Middle School, 7th and 8th Grade History Classes to travel to Washington, D.C., April 29th to May 3rd, 2012. Three B eight, Consider Financial Report for November 2011 and Tax Office Report for December 2011. Three B nine, Consider Approval of Amendment One to Developers Agreement for the City of Farmers Branch. Three B 10, Consider Authorization of Payment for Financial Audit for 2010-11 Fiscal Year. Three B 11, Consider Acceptance of Purchasing Report for the Period, January 12th, 2012 to February 2nd, 2012. Three B 12, Consider Exercising the Extension Option of RFP Number 11-02-021-1 for School Agendas and Planners. Three B 13, Consider Exercising the Extension Option of RFP Number 07-12-191-4 for Asbestos Abatement and Indoor Air Quality Consulting Services. Three B 14, Consider Exercising the Extension Option of RFP Number 09-01-151-4 for School Furniture and Equipment. Three B 15, Consider Exercising the Extension Option of RFP Number 10-02-041-2 for HVAC Services. Three B 16, Consider Exercising the Extension Option for RFP Number 11-01-041-2 for Commodity Processing. Three B 17, Consider Exercising the Extension Option of RFP Number 11-02-101-3 for Bulbs and Lambs. Three B 18, Consider All Measures Related to Roof and HVAC Replacement, including the determination that the competitive sealed proposal process is the best delivery method for construction. Three B 19, Consider All Measures Related to the Competitive Sealed Proposal Process for the Roof and HVAC Replacement, including the delegation of authority to fully review, evaluate, and rank proposals, negotiate a contract, and make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees. Three B 20, Consider Declaring Furniture, Audiovisual Equipment, and Technology Equipment Surplus and Authorizing Them for Disposal. Three B 21, Consider Declaring Bus 393 Surplus and Authorizing It for Disposal. Three B 22, Consider Approval of Minutes of Board Trustees Work Study Meeting Held January 12th, 2012. And three B 23, Consider Approval of Minutes of Board Trustees Regular Meeting Held January 12th, 2012. Board, are there any items we'd like to pull or discuss? Mr. Fleming?
I'd like to pull three B nine, Consider Approval of Amendment One to Developers Agreement for the City of Farmers Branch. If I can get a little clarification on exactly what...
Okay, any others, Board members? Okay, Mr., is, is there...
Ms. Klein, I'd like to move that we pass the consent agenda as amended.
Do you have a motion?
I'd like to second that.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. All those in favor? All those opposed? That is unanimous. Mr. Fleming, item nine?
Yes, three B nine. We get someone, get a, here he comes. Thank you, Johnny.
Basically what this agreement will do for us with the renovations and the different additions we've performed at Blair Intermediate School. As you remembered, I believe last board meeting, we executed and reworked the plat for that property. There was also an original developers agreement that was executed when we first did the Blair Intermediate School. Because of the changes of the site and different drives and the, remember the houses and different things that used to be there along the street that we've now bought and demolished, it basically just cleans up the property to make it represent what's actually on the ground out there. So basically, it's just a housekeeping mechanism to make sure that all our documents and instruments truly reflect what has been built out there.
Got you. Okay.
If you have anything specific, I'll try to answer that for you.
So, I mean, so did the city rezonate? I mean, they didn't change their zoning?
No, no zoning changes. There was the plat, I think if you remember from, from last board meeting, it outlined the fire lanes and the parking, and the parking we added. You know, it truly identified the easements, fire line easements to make sure that they are correctly identified. This agreement cleans up some of the access restrictions and different things from the neighborhood, but no one knows it's zoning changes or anything of that nature.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we consider approval of Amendment One to Developers Agreement for the City of Farmers Branch.
Thank you, we have a motion by Mr. Fleming. Ms. Watson?
Can we identify the agenda item?
I have three.
Three B nine.
B nine.
Ms. Watson was first. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? That is, Ms. Watson, you raise your hand, right?
Yes.
Yes.
That's unanimous. Three C, Consider Approval of Chief Financial Officer, Dr. Burns.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Members of the Board, I'm going to let Mr. Hyatt do the official recommendation, but I would like to take just a brief minute to make some remarks that the position that Mr. Hyatt is recommending tonight, Chief Financial Officer, takes the place of Ms. Bonnie Halsey, who is greatly missed in this district. She was a great asset to Mark's Division and just a great advocate of education and I have to give her some credit. A lot of the good positioning that we're in now as a board and a district is due to Ms. Halsey's vision as well as her attention to detail and her brilliancy with forecasting that the state was probably going to cut us. And she was right. And so, we have never suffered in this district from a lack of knowledge in knowing what our financial situation is, will be, and continue to work on it from a very strategic standpoint. So, she has some tough shoes to fill tonight, who Mr. Hyatt is recommending, but I felt it necessary to remind everybody that we truly were fortunate to have the caliber of person in Bonnie Halsey and we miss her greatly. So, Mr. Hyatt, you're up.
Dr. Burns, thank you. And without going into long detail, I couldn't agree more about how much we'll miss Ms. Halsey. She was a friend and, and she's doing well. We've been in touch with her, she, you know, she's, she's doing well and thought you'd like to know that. But on a more positive note right now, I'd like to recommend to you our recommendation for the district's new chief financial officer, Ms. Tanya Tillman. Tanya, stand up. Ms. Tillman is currently the Assistant Superintendent of Business for the Operations at Ector County ISD, that's in Odessa. She started the professional career in a public accounting and as a CPA, she's been at the Ector County ISD since 1999. Most importantly is that she will be showing her six-year-old daughter, Lavelle, to elementary school tomorrow morning. So, we expect great things from that side of the house. Ladies and gentlemen to the Board, I'd like to recommend to you our recommendation for the new chief financial officer for Carrollton Farmers Branch, Ms. Tanya Tillman.
Ms. Klein, I recommend that we accept the recommendation of the administration.
Mr. Shore?
Did I get in time?
Yes, you're, you're first.
I'll second that.
No, he's second. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor? Okay. That is unanimous and welcome aboard, Ms. Tillman. We really look forward to working with you. Item three D, Consider Approval of Revised Board Policy, FDA Local, first reading.
Yes. Ms. Klein, members of the Board, as you know, we had a work study earlier in the first semester regarding looking at an open enrollment, specifically limited open enrollment to your existing policy regarding residency and being, living within the district boundaries. So, we're bringing you back from your feedback from that work study, we're bringing you back a draft of some policy language that with your approval will allow the administration to go forward with adopting the regulations and procedures necessary to, to implement that policy in the, in the interest of, best interest of the district. So, Ms. Milliken and Dr. Franklin are here to kind of give you a brief summary of that and to bring you back up to speed on it and then have you obviously review and consider the policy. So, ladies?
Thank you. Dr. Burns, President Klein, and members of the Board. As Dr. Burns said, in the fall, we did a work study on limited open enrollment and since that time, we have worked to develop a board policy for your approval, which would address proposed changes to our FDA local. And we would like to point out that we are working with supporting objective number three, continually increasing operation, operational effectiveness.
Where are you going?
Never mind. Okay. I would like at this point to point out the recommended changes regarding policy FDA local. Our current policy reads, a non-resident student shall not be permitted to attend CFB except for the following reasons. If the student moves out of the district, the student is allowed to complete the current grade period. High school students who complete their junior year in good standing are also allowed to stay and students whose parents are full-time employees are also allowed to stay in CFB. This is our current policy and we do not propose any changes but to maintain this policy and carry it forward. What we do plan to change and what we are proposing tonight would be for the superintendent or designee to be authorized to accept or reject any transfer requests, provide that such action is without regard to race... such action is without regard to race, religion, color, disability, national origin, or ancestral language. Also, a non-resident student must file an application every single school year in order to have a transfer. That has to be approved. The transfer would only be good for one school year at a time, and he would have to apply annually, not on my slide, and the student would have to apply annually for the transfer unless they moved into CFB. Also, the open enrollment transfer would not be able to be approved or denied unless it's by the superintendent or the designee.
In addition, the district can reconsider each year this FDA local. Now, what we have currently is the, only with the exceptions of the employee transfer, seniors who have finished the junior year in good standing, and students who move out of the district being allowed to stay until the end of the grading period. We currently only have an intra-district transfers, that's within the district, and that depends on the availability of space and staff. We ask that transfer students follow all rules and regulations. It is revoked by written notice, and we do not provide any transportation for transfer students. So, on the proposed FDA local, we are proposing a limited intra-district transfers from limited geographical areas, limited campuses with available staff, space, and staff, and we continue to have transfer students must follow all rules and regulations, and the transfer can be revoked by written notice, and no transportation is provided. And just a quick summary, right now, we do not allow any intra-district transfers, but we are proposing limited open enrollment in addition to the current exceptions for students coming from out of district. So, this is our policy proposal for the changes to FDA local. Thank you.
Questions?
Ms. Klein, I'd just add a couple things, you know, from our work-study. I think we hopefully answered a lot of questions, and tonight's purpose was to bring it back and to make it a formal adoption of policy with our two readings. Certainly, there'll be some administrative regulations to work out, and we have to use our staffing numbers, our enrollment numbers, and then geographically looking around, which is, makes a logical sense for someone to come to our district without having to travel a long distance. So, those are the kind of things we'll be working with the administrative regulations of this policy. So, Mr. Shore, I think has a question.
Yeah. So, what, with this proposal, we are calling a student who is an intra-district transfer and a non-resident student who's coming to the district, we're calling them transfers?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Then I wanna, I wanna plead guilty to being anal. Because if we look at the language for the actual policy, take my word for it, all students must reapply annually unless they move into the school district.
Correct.
And here's where I'm gonna be anal. I think all students should be changed to each transfer student. I can show you.
All right, okay.
Yes, I see it.
Yeah, I think we would agree, Mr. Shore.
Yes.
You know, of course, the challenge of policy is always to make it specific enough without tying our hands, but there particularly, we want them to know which students we're talking about.
I want all students.
Yeah, just the intra, the transfer students, absolutely.
When are we looking at this being, going into a next year?
For next school year, for considered for kids coming in as intra-district transfers, yes.
So, when would parents start being able to know, or how would they find out that they're eligible?
Once we determine the areas that we're gonna target, then we'll put out some information to those areas, and also the information on our website and through our Student Services Division, giving that information to them if they can't ask, so.
I guess I'm also asking it like in a month, because I mean, or will it be over the summer?
No, it'll be right after we adopt the policy.
We'll have our second reading.
Second reading in March, so it'll be after March, and we'll start our intra-district transfers, and then our intra-district transfers after that.
And then are we, I know that part of the concern was, one of the neighboring districts isn't really going past elementary, or are we working towards them being able, if they continue to transfer, to go all the way up to high school? Is that our goal, to make it?
Right now, we are, we are limiting to considering elementary with the continuation possible with good standing.
Okay. So, we're not saying?
That's right. They could, they could finish the twelfth grade if they are meeting the guidelines of the district standards that we meet, that we set.
Have to reapply each year.
And have to reapply that year. That's correct.
Board members, any other questions or discussion? At this time, we have the two audience for guests. When I call your name, please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. We'll have Ms. Jeanette Griffin first, and then Mr. Darrell Mix.
Good evening. Can you hear me? My name is Jeanette Griffin. I live at one three three two five Farmers Branch Lane, Farmers Branch, Texas. I'll be brief. I know you, you have already considered a lot of this, but I have a seventh and fifth grader at Mary Maculate School. I'm also a Girl Scout leader, and my husband sits on the Board of the Farmers Branch Baseball Association. My children are very active in their school and their community, but because we live on a specific site of Webb Chapel, they won't be allowed to continue on with their friends in the community and go on to high school, and they would very much like to be a part of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. And it's kind of an emotional thing, because I wish that they could continue on with their school friends, but they're not allowed to. The money is just not there. And with these economic times, there's many, many more families that are in this boat, and I hope that you adopt this for high school as my seventh grader comes up, because he would like to be a part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mix?
My name's Darrell Mix. I live at thirty-one thirty-one Brook Hollow Drive, which is Valley View and Webb Chapel. I live basically two hundred yards from the district. To me, it's never made any sense at all why a resident Farmers Branch, you know, can't attend, you know, the Carrollton Farmers Branch School District. I have two sons that go to Mary Maculate also, and the same thing, you know, I threw a divorce and losing my business, the economic times don't help me either as far as going on, continuing with the Catholic education. And so, like she said, it's kind of an emotional thing. I apologize for not knowing about this stuff. You know, y'all's meeting and the study you've done, I, you know, I didn't know it was an option. And this meeting today, to be honest, I just found out about it today and dropped everything I was doing to come and just say a few things. One thing I'd like to say is, you know, y'all are talking about your math scores and all these stuff. These, you know, students, like my, my son is very academic. He scored on the Iowa standardized testing in the ninety-eight percentile. He was chosen for the Duke.
Talent search.
Talent search. Took the SAT at Newman Smith. You know, I've lived in Farmers Branch since nineteen seventy-eight, and, you know, I'm a single parent with two kids, and my mom lives across the street. I can't believe this is getting me like this. And I just, I would like to have the same opportunity. I have lots of friends that are teachers, that have gone through. They highly recommend the schools. Their kids live in the district, have been very successful getting into good colleges, and I guess all I would say is I'd just like to have the same opportunity.
Thank y'all both for your comments. Are there any discussion on those, or any further?
Ms. Klein, members of the Board, I would like to point out, and we appreciate you coming, and we appreciate the positive words about our district. We do believe we're, we're offering a great opportunity for kids, and our goal is high achievement for all of them, and we're gonna keep pushing that. Unfortunately, with this policy, we have looked at elementary so that we could longitudinally plan for them as they enter middle school and high school, and so, it's a little bit more difficult to consider out-of-district transfers or intra-district transfers when they're in the secondary schools, and certainly in high school with some eligibility. So, with the Board's direction, certainly, we can look at that, but space has been our problem there, as you recall, with middle school, and that's why we adopted or suggested that we would look at elementary. And so, I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that right now, that that was what we were looking at in terms of opening to was elementary at this time and not the secondary. So, but thank you very much for your comments.
You know, wasn't like Newman Smith?
Could you come back to the microphone if you're, we don't mind if you want to?
The reason I'm just asking is that, you know, you're talking about the school district, the amount of kids, but weren't both Creekview and Newman Smith at one time five-A schools, and now they're down to four-A schools for enrollment?
Yes, but the number is really a small differential from being five-A to four-A from where they are.
Again, once again, I apologize for not knowing the study.
That's okay.
Because I didn't, you know, I would love to, you know, where do I, can I look at that, by the way?
Almost all of that should be on our website, but if you call our, just call our main number and ask for our Communications Department, and they can fill you in with all of that.
Right.
Be happy to share that with you.
And like I said, if, you know, anything could be considered on a, you know, I know these things on case-by-case basis, because, like I said, you know, these kids, her son and my son, are very intelligent, driven kids that just would like the opportunity. So, that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move to item three E, consider approval of changes to the following board policy.
We need action on this first reading.
Sorry. Three D, is there...
Ms. Klein, I recommend that we approve the first reading of the revised change policy FDA local.
Ms. Watten will second that. Is all those in favor? Right.
Well, I wanna change two words.
Yeah, would you like to amend that with the, with the suggested revision?
Yes, I would join that if we're revising those words.
Make a motion with the revision. I'll withdraw my motion.
Withdraw yours, and you're okay with that, Ms. Watten?
In that case, I move whatever Lynn moved, except I wanna change the words "all students" to "each transfer student." That's my motion.
I second that.
Thank you, Ms. Watten. All those in favor? All those opposed? That is unanimous. So, now, we'll go to three E, consider approval of changes to the following board policies, EIA local, EIC local, and EI local, first reading. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Members of the Board, just to kind of give you a brief overview, and Dr. Mayer and her staff have put together a little summary for you to help you with the understanding. But, as you know, and we've talked about the state moving from STAR testing and end-of-course exams, and there are some unique challenges with implementing that in your policy based on the state's both intent and in their language. So, we're gonna try to make that as simple as we can tonight, as well as try to adopt a policy that gives us the most flexibility, but I would add a little disclaimer, it could change with the state. So, Dr. Mayer?
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Yes, indeed, it could change, and actually, we thought we would be bringing this information to you earlier than we are in the school year, because this change, this legislation that has resulted in these changes are really going to impact our current ninth-grade students. But because there have been so many changes from the Texas Education Agency regarding interpretation of the legislation, we kept putting this off. So, we finally think that we have landed on how we are going to approach and work with end-of-course exams. What I'm going to share with you this evening is a very brief PowerPoint that our principals will be sharing at, with parents, teachers, and students who will be taking the ELC, the end-of-course exams, this spring. And that will be our, like I said, our ninth-grade students and some eighth-grade students. So, first of all, let's review what the actual code says about this. Each school district shall adopt a policy that requires a student's performance on the end-of-course assessment instrument to account for fourteen, fifteen percent of the student's final grade for the course. So, this is the first time ever that a high-stakes test is actually going to be figured into a student's final grade. What courses will be impacted and will actually take an end-of-course exam? Well, as you can see here, basically, foundation courses in the area of English, math, science, and social studies for freshmen through junior year, is when most students take these courses, are the courses that will have an end-of-course exam attached to it. We like to say there are twelve exams, but in reality, in English, there's a reading and a writing exam at each level. So, really, there are fifteen. You may recall that in tax, students had objectives that were from various courses and level that they were being assessed on. In other words, in science, tax, they would have a few questions over physics, a few questions over biology, a few questions over chemistry. That caused a lot of consternation, so that will no longer be the case. It will be, this assessment will be over the text, the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills for each course. How will the ELC exams impact a student's graduation requirements? Well, just like the high-stakes tax test, students will have to earn a minimum score on all the exams, the twelve exams, plus accrue a cumulative score when all exam scores are added together in a subject area. And I'm going to share with you an example. It might be a little bit difficult to see, but this is an actual example that was provided to us by the agency. Of the, of the passing scale on each of the three science ELCs, and you could substitute the word "science" for English, or math, or social studies, but if it happens to be set at one thousand, then the students must have a cumulative score that is equal to or greater than all three of those tests. The cumulative score needs to be three thousand. There is a minimum score of nine hundred. So, if a student, let's say, in biology would score twelve hundred, but eight hundred on chemistry and eleven hundred on physics, that he didn't meet the minimum score on chemistry. So, chemistry, he would have to retake, okay, to get the cumulative score. So, you have to add all three of these scores up in a subject, and you have to meet a certain level in order to meet what they call the cumulative score, and that is a graduation requirement. So, students must meet that minimum requirement and the cumulative requirement in order to graduate. And this is a more rigorous standard than what students have had. I also need to tell you that we are phasing this in, so we still have students taking tax. Sometimes people think tax is over, but our tenth and our eleventh graders this, this year will take tax. So, then the example, if a student made a nine hundred on each of those three science assessments, the student meets the minimum requirement, but not the cumulative, because he has to get the three thousand and meet the minimum. So, retakes are available, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Who will take the ELC exams this spring, which is right around the corner, will be students who first entered the ninth grade this fall semester, last semester, two thousand and eleven. And how's that going to impact a student's final grade? Well, as you know, the ELC must count fifteen percent of the final grade. We will add the first semester, will account for forty-two point five percent. We will add that to second semester, forty-two point five percent, plus the fifteen percent for the ELC exam, and that's how we will arrive at the final course grade. Semester one and semester two... Semester one and semester two will be determined the same way that we determine that right now. There will be a cer, a certain number of summative assessments, formative assessments, and a semester exam will compute and be figured into and account for the 42.5%. Will the ELC exam impact a student's GPA and class rank? I think I should probably start with that second sentence instead of the first. TEA has stated that a relationship should exist between the ELC exams and the GPA and class rank. A lot of districts were discussing this in the fall, and then in October, TEA put out a very detailed FAQ outlining their expectations and their interpretation of the legislation. So, yes, since ELC exam scores are going to contribute to a student's final course grade, and those final course grades will, will be what we determine GPA and class rank. What are the guidelines for retaking an ELC exam? Here's where it starts to get a little more complicated. There's a must-retake, and there's a may-retake. A student must retake an ELC exam when he or she does not meet that minimum score. They set that minimum score, let's say, at 900. You don't meet it, you have to continue to take that test until you do. Another scenario is if the student failed the course and the ELC exam resulted in that, they will retake the ELC exam. A student may retake an ELC exam, however, to improve that cumulative score, let's say they just want to get a higher cumulative score, or to meet a satisfactory performance or earn, to meet a satisfactory performance or earn the college readiness standard. The college readiness standard, this all has yet to be set, but it will be earning a certain score on Algebra II and English III, and students will want to do that. We, we don't know all the rules yet, but we anticipate that that's going to be looked at seriously by colleges and universities. We've also included here, because this is a PowerPoint we want to share with parents, that, that students will have to register for that exam prior to the exam window. So, we are trying to be as transparent as possible with how all this is going to work. Students actually may retake the ELC exam as often as they desire. When a student retakes an exam, will the grade be recalculated? The only time the ELC exam retake will result in a grade being recalculated is when the retake score is required to gain course credit. The recalculation, however, is not going to contribute to a student's GPA and class rank. The first time tested score, what we averaged into that court, final course grade is what will be used for GPA and rank. The reality is, you know, if student's not successful, they, the ELC will help them, but there are probably some other levers that they may want to push to see if they can regain credit, and we'll talk about that in a second. Will the ELC exam be on a student's report card transcript? The answer to that is yes. State requirements, if a student is not successful, just like we have requirements now when students aren't successful in grades five and grade eight, when they're not successful on the state exam, will there be requirements for the ELC? The answer to that is yes. Students who do not meet that minimum requirement on the ELC exam must attend accelerated instruction during the summer. So, that certainly will provide some challenges for us in what we do during the summer. What are the credit recovery options if I fail an ELC course? Well, the real answer to that is, it depends. It will depend on an individual student's situation and needs, however, we are going to offer the following options. One option might be just targeted intervention for the ELC. May not be a lot of students that are going to bank on retaking the ELC to help them earn credit, because we have figured out, our, our good mathematician, Kathy Webb, has figured out, that a student would have to improve his score approximately nine points in order to improve his overall grade, one point. So, I, I, that, that might not be something that I exercised unless I, I was really close to passing the course. Credit by exam, we currently do credit by exam for, from Texas Tech, but we also have some district-developed at Central Office credit by exams in Algebra I and Biology. I am going, I have asked our coordinators to develop credit by exams for all 12 of the assessments that are assessed on an ELC, so that could also be an avenue, or way a student could regain credit. Traditional summer school, you know, we will be looking at each student on an individual basis, on the number one and number two option there. If a student's really close, if they failed in the 60s, those would probably be good options. They'll be in an intervention in summer school, and if they can pass the test, they will be able to gain credit. If we look at the transcript in semester one and semester two, or, or low grades, chances are, they're going to have to repeat the course in summer school like we have always done. The fourth option is online course options, where a student can get on and take one of these courses online. So, we'll be looking at students individually, and based on their situation, advising them on the best way to recover credit. More information on ELC, and probably more than anyone would want to read about, can be accessed through the website on the PowerPoint. Questions?
Order, Ms. Watson?
When, if you retake the ELC, you, by preference, you want to take it. So, you, they take the highest of the scores that, so they don't reevaluate, they do take the highest of the scores. If they, they can retake it as many times as they want to.
You can retake it as many times as you want to get your final cumulative score. If you're wanting to get your cumulative score up, or you're wanting to meet a ready, the college readiness standard, you can, you can do that. It won't impact your grade, you, you already have course credit, but it, that will be.
As long as it's over the cumulative amount of the 1,000. As long as it's over that required minimum amount.
Half, those three courses in each subject must meet what the state says as a cumulative score. The example they have given in all of their examples has been 3,000, and I think that's to help with some easy math, that you would have to get, you know, a bear, it's got, it has to add up. You don't, all three of those don't have to be 1,000, but that would mean if one of them's 900, if you have global 900, you have to retake, but if one of them is 900, then obviously, one of the other two has to be above 1,000, so that the cumulative score could be 3,000.
As many times as you take it, they'll accept the highest score, cumulative score.
To add together.
Mm-hmm.
Board members, are there any other questions or discussion on this item? Mr. Shore.
Yes. I think that we want to approve this policy under the circumstances that has been proposed.
All those in favor? All those opposed? That is unanimous. At this time, we're at item four, comments from board members. 4A, comments regarding posted agenda items, are there any?
No.
Well, that takes us to item five, closed meetings authorized under Texas government code. Dr. Burns, do we have any items for closed meeting?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Item six, reconvene, we don't need to do that. Item seven, adjournment. At this time, hearing no more items, seeing no more items, our Board of Trustees are done at 8:52.